Or by sending an email to the Ellsworth School Board Vice Chair, Paul Markozian at PaulMarkozian@EllsworthSchools.org.
Correction, Mrs. Thomas, it's actually P. Markozian, P. as in Paul.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's all right, M.A.R.K.O.S.S.N.I.N. as in Nancy@EllsworthSchools.org.
Okay, thank you.
And at this time, I have not received any email questions and there's no new questions in the Zoom Q and A at this time.
Thank you. Administrative reports. Building administrators, Mr. Clifford.
Yes, thank you. You have my report. First, I want to touch on VPA awards because obviously they did not get to compete in the state championships, but did really well in the regional championships. Music with Jazz Band had a silver rating. One combo group had a silver rating and the other combo group had a bronze. In show choir, they received a gold rating, ninety-eight out of a hundred, and qualified for the state championship as well as Jazz Band. And one act play, they won their Class B Regional Drama Festival and qualified for the state championship also. And you have the individual awards in front of you. So they, all of them, the VPA program had terrific seasons again this year and represented Ellsworth High School very well. The Main Principals Association Award, so this award is given to only one senior and it's based on academics, civic duty, leadership, and co-intricurricular activity involvement. And we usually have honors luncheon, which is in April. It was moved to May ninth, but I received word late last week that that's been canceled also. But Eden Salzig is the winner of the Main Principals Association Award. Eden has a grade point average of a one oh one point six. She's an incredible musician, a great person. Has taken eleven honors courses, four EP courses, and four concurrent enrollment courses. And in the fall, she's attending Bowden College. And she's just a terrific student, terrific person. I know some of you know her and I can't say enough things about her. You know, she is, we will miss her very much next year, not having her in our hallways. And I know our teachers will too. But she has a bright, bright future ahead of her. And as far as distance learning, we're in our third week and it's gone, it's gone well. It's mostly been on Zoom and Google Classroom. Those are the most popular models that teachers are using right now. We still have department head meetings. We had a faculty meeting of seventy-one people on Friday. And that was successful. It went well. I didn't know how that was gonna go, but it went well. You know, we're in contact with parents and students of students that aren't participating as much as we would like. But teachers overall are happy with how it's gone. And teachers are pretty much following the regular schedule that we have, so they'll meet with kids for fifty minutes and it's mostly through Zoom. And then some, if they need extra help, because we don't have the focus learning, they'll have office hours, which is kind of like the college model. And so students can zoom in with them and ask questions and, and things like that. Or they'll hold, you know, a study session with five or six kids, you know, before an assessment. But students are taking assessments. And grades are going into jump rope as always, and so far, so good. It's gone pretty well. Any questions?
Great job to her.
Thank you, Dan. That was nice news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowles. You've always said you don't want to follow Mrs. Lewis, so here's your opportunity.
I was just thinking that. Well, hi, everyone. It's nice to see you all. HCTC's remote learning is going well. We had an immediate hiccup the first week or so with trying to figure out all of our sending high school schedules with their students. I'd say that was probably our biggest glitch, but after about a week, that evened out. So now we have a pretty set schedule for kids to either do Zoom or Google Classroom with their CTE teachers. I think the hardest thing that our students are struggling with right now with being out is their lack of live work and missing that hands-on piece. They're doing all of their industry-standard academic work, but of course, with safety and some of the things that we do, we can't replicate our live work settings like we could a classroom. So I think that's been probably the hardest thing for our students. Staff's working very hard right now. They're, like all of our teachers are. But something in addition that my staff is doing right now is they're meeting almost weekly with their tech update groups statewide. So all the CNA teachers in the state are meeting weekly, all the automotive teachers are meeting because we have to work with each individual industry group to decide what's gonna happen with certification exams. So that's probably the biggest question for our school right now with distance learning is will students be allowed to take certification exams remotely? Or will we have to give them possibly next fall and give people a chance to come back and take them? So that's really our biggest question mark that's hanging in the air. Like Dan, we've had our staff meeting, we're meeting once a week right now. Just to kind of, I think for staff, it's comforting to see everyone and kind of check in. We will have information moving forward about NTHS. Some families have been wondering when that information will come out and we'll be putting that information out shortly. But a couple of other things outside of distance learning to talk about. First, we have mailed out our Fall of 2020 enrollment letters. So students by now should have received their letters, letting them know of their acceptance and their decisions for the Fall of 2020. We have our largest enrollment at two hundred and fifty-two students, which we're really excited about. And we also sent out Bridge Academy acceptance letters at the same time. So we have a cohort right now of sixteen students that have been accepted into Bridge, which is a great number. We're really pleased with that also. Finally, we have some good news for a couple of our students. We went to press last week, maybe a week and a half ago, about Maine State Science Fair and had some students do exceptionally well at the Maine State Science Fair, receiving full scholarships. And this week, we found out that we have two students who are finalists in the Bioscience Association of Maine's competition. It's called the Maine BioGenius Competition. And two of our students are doing their final presentations and interviews with industry people tomorrow. And then we'll find out Thursday how they did. And it's Julia Pacanti from Mount Desert Island High School and Ariel Larrabee, a DRL Stonington High School student who attends Ellsworth High School through Bridge. She was one of our big, our biggest award winner in the Maine State Science Fair. So we wish them luck tomorrow as they again have to compete and do their science research presentations virtually, which has been, you know, a good experience too for these kids to learn how to do their presentations this way as well. So we're really proud of them. Are there any questions about any of the report?
No.
Amy, we have, I have a question. We have two new programs. And looks like we've got some decent enrollment in both of those.
Yes, I'm pleased with our first round. Considering that it isn't an instructor or classroom for them to see because it hasn't been committed yet, I'm really excited that we can be convinced that we did.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job to Julie and Ariel. Best of luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Is Erica here?
I'm on.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Thank you for being patient with me tonight as I tried to log on. Just a quick update about the middle, and I'm gonna kind of cover the elementary school as well and Mrs. Lewis's absence. We have been working really hard. We did our second distribution of materials today. So at this point, between today and tomorrow, all students K eight should have a device that will allow them to continue their remote learning. Teachers have been utilizing Google Classroom, Zoom, Google Meets to meet with, with students, check in, and make sure that everyone is getting their material, materials. They've been doing lessons on Zoom and Google Meets. And things are going fairly well. We're making sure that we're checking in with all of our students. Special Ed is, is continuing to hold IEP meetings and meet with students and parents. And we are making sure that all of our students have everything that they need in order to be successful in this new remote learning environment. So as we move through, there's some opportunity, I think, for us to be creative with kids. We're getting a lot of videos back from students. Fifth grade has done some riddles of the week and we're getting some creative videos back that I'm trying to, some of them post on Facebook as well. So there's a lot of really wonderful things happening at EEMS. And though this is not how we would want to be with our students, we are excited to see them on a daily basis through the virtual world. And we're gonna keep things moving right along. So does anyone have any questions?
Actually, I have a question for all of our principals here. What are we doing for families who, because of work and other extenuating circumstances during this crisis, can't sit with their kids and do this amount of homework?
Well, so I can speak for the middle school to that. We are being really flexible. We have heard from a lot of parents and we're getting a lot of great feedback and we're communicating with parents. And for those students who don't have that support during the day, we have teachers who are offering office hours to do the help and do help them virtually. We are making sure that we are communicating back and forth with students and parents to understand the situation of each student. And so we are working on an individual basis with families to help them during that time.
And it's the same at the high school, just communicating with the parents, communicating with the students. But that is one thing that we're trying to gauge and we talked a lot about it at the faculty meeting is, you know, how much work is too much? And we're trying to gauge that right now, but it's kind of an individual basis. Some students, you know, are doing really well and school is what they're doing. And there are other students that we're finding are working a lot of hours during the week. You know, we're trying to, trying to service those students also.
Yeah, I would agree. At the secondary level, that's probably been one of our biggest challenges is kids are working and working and working. And they're working a lot of long hours to try to support their families. So really, we've all stressed to our staff flexibility and individualizing things to try to best meet families and students' needs during this time.
What about families that don't have internet access? I have somebody who wants me very specifically to ask about that.
At our school, and I believe Mr. Clifford's, we identified pretty early on lists of kids who didn't have internet access. And we've been providing packets instead of the online stuff so that they don't have to use the internet at all if they can't do that. We're not gonna punish kids for not being able to access the internet.
In addition, the technology department has compiled the list provided by teachers and parents and administrators. And the state is purchasing in bulk some type of device. They haven't defined what the device is. If anybody's heard any additional information besides me, please go ahead. And basically, the device will serve as a hotspot, so they will be able to connect. We're waiting to hear about that. They did a big bulk buy for that, so I'm hoping that that's here within the next week or two.
Mrs. Clifford, I can address that a little bit more. Everything that Mrs. Clifford said is accurate. The one thing that superintendents in Hancock County heard last week in our meeting with the commissioner is that we expect to hear something by the end of the week on the update of where those devices that Mrs. Clifford was talking about are. So certainly, once we get that information, we're gonna make sure we get it out to parents and find a way to get that technology access to our students who don't have it right now.
And it's the same thing at the high school that Mrs. Bowles said. We have mailings going out, you know, pretty much every day to students for work that they, that they're missing or they need. And we have a list of students that don't have internet.
Yep, and the elementary and middle schools are doing the same thing and providing that work for students who don't have access.
So what do you recommend parents do who maybe have contacted the teacher already to say, this is way too much work for my second grader to do between now and the end of the year. This is a lot. I work, I have other kids. And the teacher has said. So what do they do next?
I would suggest they reach out to the administrator. I don't, you know, we are working with families individually. I'm personally, as the principal of the middle school, I'm getting emails from parents and we are working with them to try to accommodate. We're coming up, meeting with parents and kids individually, virtually even, to design a plan or a schedule that might help them through this new environment in which they're learning. So those are the things that we are working on on a daily basis. And if there is an issue, I would, I would suggest that they contact the administrator.
And how are assignments being turned in going to be impacting people's grades? Because just for instance, I got my child's report card and she missed one single part of one project in one, funny. In one single, you know, class. And it dropped her all the way down to a two. So now, of course, me and lots of other people are really concerned with this grading system. So basically, she turned in a project, one single piece of that was, was, was missing and it, it brought her grade down very, very far. So now myself and lots of parents are paranoid, like, we're trying, I, I'm having to sift through sometimes seventeen emails to see where the assignments are. What if I miss one thing? What if when I'm sending pictures off and I send off three at a time instead of two of a time and one doesn't attach? How do I know my child is not going to, you know, suffer greatly in her grades because of what's going on?
I think one thing that I would encourage all parents to do who are in situations similar to yours, Mrs. Miller, is to again, reach out to the administrator and pose those specific questions. One of the things that our leadership team is talking about in depth right now is what grading is going to look like for the balance of the year. And it's really a difficult decision, but one of the things that we are all reaching consensus on is there are all kinds of situations out there for families, some of them very unique. And we're gonna have to do the best that we can to individualize as much as possible so that those students are not punished for circumstances out of their control. And one of the things we've said about remote learning, this is the first time that school districts in Maine have done remote learning on a scale this large. Despite the best efforts of our administrators and our staff and our support staff and our teachers, it is not perfect at this point in time. We recognize that there are frustrations out there. We encourage you to be patient with us and work with us. And we will address those situations on an individualized basis.
I think maybe we should think about moving to a pass or fail system. I think we have one semester left. This is, there are so many things that we don't know. And if we just sit back and wait, well, we've only got, you know, two months left. I'm not gonna wait till maybe my kid is passing or maybe my kid is failing and maybe I find out later down the line, oh, she failed. Oh, sorry, that email didn't have everything in it we needed. Let's, I, I, this is something for the board to do.
And Mrs. Miller, one thing I can share with you is our leadership team met for a couple of hours on Monday. We're meeting again on Friday to discuss the issue of grading. There are many options that we're looking at. Again, I would stress to all the parents out there, we're looking at options that are designed to make sure we act in the best interest of our kids and not to penalize anybody for circumstances out of their control.
But this is where those decisions need to be hashed out in public with public input. Not in a, in a meeting that nobody in the public is invited to.
And what I would also say is that the remote learning plan that the administrators are putting together will be brought to the board for its consideration at the special meeting on the twenty-eighth.
That's a long way away. That's, that's two more weeks of wondering what we're doing.
That, that situation that you brought up, you know, if, if school is in session, then the parent or the student at the high school level would talk to the teacher, maybe followed up by a discussion with the parent and then include the administrator. So I don't see that being different, you know, in this case than, than if we were in school, if we were in session.
I find the potential for something to be missed in this situation to be far greater than when in school. Considering that, as I said, my own child's grade was penalized greatly for one thing that was a misunderstanding that they thought, she thought was finished. And I'm supposed to, you know, basically, she'd made one tiny mistake in an entire semester and now I'm supposed to trust a system in which, you know, as I said, I'm sifting through, you know, some things are in an email and some things are this way and some things are this way. And I have to make sure that all of these things, and I have one child. I have parents talking to me now who have three kids who are working, who don't have a husband who goes to work and who lets them stay at home. These are real concerns. And I'm sorry, two weeks from now, to, to maybe have answers, that's a long time. I feel like we've already been at this a month. Our parents deserve a few more answers regarding our grading system and if our kids are going to pass or fail. And if it is that hard to really pull together, then I think as a board, we need to talk about going to a pass/fail system.
And again, as, as I communicated to the board, one of the things that's happening is the remote learning plan is under development by our administrators and their staffs at this time. It will be brought to you and you will see it well beforehand. The other thing I would ask all parents to recognize, again, this is a brand-new system for everybody. The frustrations that you're sharing and having at home are consistent with the frustrations that the members of our staff are having. We please ask you to be considerate and understand and patient as we work through the multiple variables that go along with developing and implementing a full-scale remote learning plan. The other piece is important to remember is students in grades K through six have not had the benefit, students and staff, I should say, have not had the benefit of having their Chromebooks and their iPads at home. So certainly, what has been in place for a remote program thus far for students in those grades will have a different look moving forward.
Once again, this is something that is curriculum-related. We have a curriculum committee for a reason. That committee should have been convened when we, when we saw this coming down the pipeline. And now that it's here, we're still not talking about putting the curriculum committee together to talk about this. These things are meant to be talked about with the public in mind. The only way that happens is if the school board representatives are there, talk about it together and vote on it. Otherwise, we're having, when you say leadership team, that means only these small group of people who are in this team get to make all of those decisions for the entire district. And you're cutting out the voice of the board.
What, what we're required to do by law is to create a remote learning plan and bring it to the board for approval and submit the board's minutes that are approving that to the Department of Education. That learning plan, again, please understand, since the closure started, we started off with having our teachers and administrators plan in two-week increments because we had no idea at that point in time how long the closure was going to last. It has been extended on two occasions thus far and now has been extended to the end of the year. So planning on an intermittent basis presents one set of challenges. Now that we know what's going to be through the balance of the school year, it gives our teachers and support staff and administrators an opportunity to sketch that out for the balance of the year. And yes, we recognize that there are challenges and frustrations with parents and students out there. But as the team develops that plan and brings it forward to the board for consideration, hopefully, the answers and the frustrations and the concerns that you have will be addressed. But I would also stress, no students are going to be punished because of circumstances that are out of their control. These are unique and challenging circumstances for all of us.
And I'm saying that this is something that the curriculum committee should be part of that team. Not an after the fact, well, now you've got it all worked out to the way you want it and now it's an all-or-nothing vote. Committees are there for a reason. And I want to know, if you're not gonna utilize that committee, I want to know why. I want to know from the whole board why we should not be convening the curriculum committee for this purpose.
My understanding of the curriculum committee is to work with curriculum, not with the grading system. The grading system has to come from administrators and teachers. Curriculum has to do with what you're presenting. That's my understanding.
And people have questions about that. And people have, people have a public voice in that. And by not bringing that, the board in, we're saying that there is no public voice in deciding that curriculum. And this is a change to the curriculum.
Mr. Markozian, I'll ask you the question. Are you seeing anything in the question and answer block that relates to what Ms. Miller's talking about?
Yeah, we have one question. It's from an anonymous viewer and I think this is a good opportunity to remind people that just like in a public meeting, when you get up to speak, you, we ask that you identify yourself. And in the future, if you, anyone who wants to submit a question, either email or through this application, please give your full name. But this is an anonymous viewer who asks, who says it would be helpful to know what we can expect from teachers at EEMS. How many times are they going to meet with their students individually and collectively each week? So far, there has been a big difference between how often teachers have communicated with my children. How is the administration making sure that there is consistency?
I mean, I can speak to the middle school. I can't speak to the elementary school, so I'm not sure if that was a elementary or a middle school piece, Mr. Markozian?
I don't, it doesn't say. It just says EEMS.
Okay, so I know that in the middle school, teachers, with the exception of fifth and sixth grade, because they've not had their devices, have not been able to hold virtual meetings with students as of yet. But they are working on that now that fifth and sixth graders do have their devices in the coming days this week, today and tomorrow. But I do, I can tell you that eighth and seventh have been meeting virtually with students on a weekly basis, three to five times a week. Sometimes it is that they're doing lessons on Zoom or Google Meets. And sometimes it is that they're just meeting with students to see if they need anything, checking on their mental health, giving students a place to meet, to collaborate with each other and see each other because this is sometimes the only opportunity for our middle school students to see their classmates. So I, I can speak for the middle school that this has been happening three to five times a week. And that is the plan to continue. And the fifth and sixth grade teachers are also going to be implementing that as soon as they know that their students have devices and, and we can make sure that everybody has an opportunity to try to do that.
If I may add also, as far as the curriculum is concerned, as Ms. Thomas discussed, our curriculum that is, the work that is being sent out is still aligned with the standards that Ellsworth has chosen to assess. And in my report, I'll be talking about how teachers can, how parents can look at those. We have a new way to display those for families. And also, we are sharing our remote learning plans between the schools as a leadership team so that we are ensuring consistency and talking about the, the needs that families have as far as making them individual based on the family's. making them individual based on the family's, um, challenges, as Erica said. And so in varieties of meetings that I've been attending at each of the schools, there, the principals are talking about, um, challenges that different families are having, how the, um, the curriculum can be adapted for them. So there's been quite a bit of discussion between schools, at schools and across the board, um, to make sure that we're all having the same conversations and having the same expectations. So we are, we are trying very hard to be, um, to ensure consistency as far as expectations, both from before remote learning started and after. It is imperfect because we are learning as we're flying the plane, as they say, but, um, we're working towards it. And I think also as, um, all kids have devices, which has just been starting today, there will be, um, some more consistent, um, curriculum and resources sent out so that their, um, families can see that across the different students that they have in their homes.
There is one more new question. It's from Robert Miller. He asks, why is just, why is it just the leadership team meeting? Why is this the first board meeting? There are four board members that have been elected by the citizens of Ellsworth. Why do they not all have input into this situation? It is like you have subcommittee for COVID without officially recognizing it as a subcommittee.
I, I can try to address some of those, Mr. Markozian. With regard to why is this the first board meeting, this is the first board meeting that was scheduled since the school closure. But specifically in regard to why is the leadership team, if you look at the process by which, processes and practices are developed in schools, typically those come from your, uh, staff. And those processes, practices and plans are developed and brought forth to the board. Given the timeframe that we're dealing with and the amount of work that our staff has had to do to get remote learning plans into place. And as Mrs. Corbin Ramos said, you know, we're developing these plans as we are delivering the same curriculum we've, we've been delivering before, uh, the shutdown. The process is such that the administrative team, leadership team, as we call it, will work with their staff to develop those plans and bring them forth to the board. That's where the board will have their input and their opportunity to ask questions before they have a, are being asked to approve it.
The other piece too is just, just to be clear, our leadership team includes all of the different pieces. So we're not just talking about principals and administrators. We have our special ed director, assistant special ed director, adult ed director, but also food service and, um, uh, maintenance and transportation, which are all such huge pieces of managing this new remote learning situation. So all of us are talking about all the ways in which these different pieces have to work together. So the leadership team isn't a, a tiny group. We're quite a large group. We're trying to make sure that the consistency is across all of the working parts of the school department, which has been quite a new challenge. And, um, you know, those pieces are getting worked out and people have been working together amazingly well to make all of this work. But there are a lot of moving parts. And so as we get this new information, we are finding new ways to make things consistent. And we certainly have been saying consistently over and over again, that no student will be, get, find any detriment towards working their hardest and families working their hardest. And we are building that into the system so that all students can get as much benefit out of this surprising situation.
When we talk about leadership teams, I want to know how many times board members are meeting with these leadership teams?
I've never met with a leadership team.
How many times do you guys meet with Dan when we're not meeting as a board? How many times a week, a month? How many times since this crisis?
I think this, since this is started, I've met with him twice. For board leadership and once for the finance committee.
And this is what I mean. We have no, we have no involv, we have no notes on that. We, it is not open to the public. Once, you're talking about, well, these are developed and then brought to the board. But once again, by doing that, you cut out the public voice.
The leadership team in the school department does not include board members. The leadership team meets every week. Since this has taken place, we've met on a more regular basis because there are multiple issues that have to be addressed and determined and implemented. Many of those that don't require board vote and approval. Okay. We do inform the board of what's going on. Okay.
This is the only board that hasn't had an emergency meeting until now. I have done a lot of asking around. I'm saying right now that the public needs more involvement and their voice needs to be heard in this. You're saying you guys are working hard. No one's disagreeing with you about that. But what we are saying is that our, the public has concerns and they have some issues that they want hashed out. And not after the fact, but before, while it's being made. And that we have committees and a board for these reasons. We exist for these exact situations and they're not being utilized. We're just sitting back waiting to hear, well, what, but you know, we get an email, what may be right before the public? That's not what a board does. That's not what the committees do. There's been, you know. I have asked the board to meet before and was denied. And I do not find this to be, not only is it not best practice, this is just, this is not okay.
Is Ms. Sargent present? Yes. Hi, Annie.
Hi there. You ready for my report?
We're ready for your report.
Great. So, uh, Ellsworth Adult Ed has, uh, been continuing to serve students. Our Small Business Academy, I'm excited to sta, say, um, has gone on, uh, online with the same number of participants as before. So that's an exciting, um, thing that's happening. A, a great experience with family involvement happened with, um, we have a student who's in, taking advantage of three of our programs, um, and algebra class, Noah Biology, Chemistry and Algebra. And the, um, kids are involved with the sessions at home and that's been a great experience. She's a single mom. She's a, a widow of a, a military man. And she's had a lot of struggles. She got her high set last year and she's pursuing, uh, college prep for college. And, uh, her kids who are from four, the 12 to three are involved with the lesson. So that's really exciting. I have some more details in my report. Um, and then I wanted to just read this email from somebody. And this was March 19th, so early in the process. I understand you must be completely overwhelmed and busy, so I write quickly. I just wanted to reach out and thank you all for all you've done to continue classes as best as possible in this difficult and bizarre time. I'm so excited to have my first online class tonight with Marty. I'm tickled pink that both she and Vanessa Richards, my biology teacher, are both so flexible and willing to keep this going for us. Best of health to you and I hope after we all get to the other side of this, a lot of good comes of it. And that gave me, um, a lot of encouragement. I worry a lot about a, a lot of our students and I, Lisa's response gave me a lot of encouragement that, um, there are a lot of silver linings and that we can make a difference. Um, another thing is that I've been able to stay really connected with partners. And one example of addressing, um, internet with, with, which a board member brought up. I, uh, Mac Revival, uh, Tom B. O. From Mac Revival is, um, donating some computers to the adult ed students who don't have them. And I have a woman who worked as a personal care assistant for a long time and she was injured. Um, and can't go back to that work. So she's retooling with computers and, uh, just talked to Tom today and he's going to donate a computer to her and we're working with Spectrum to get internet at her house. So, uh, we're very excited, uh, about that kind of collaboration, um, with vocational rehabilitation. And we're, um, we have a couple of offerings starting up this spring actually. And we're planning, um, classes for next semester. So we, we've been busy. Uh, things have been going quite well. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Annie.
Yep. Ms. Corbin Ramos.
Hi, good evening. Jumped the gun a little bit early, uh, but I have some, uh, additional news. Once we learned that our students would be learning from home, we were able to share surplus learning materials from storage so that, our teachers were, as they were beginning to get online, um, they were getting up and running. They could send home the pencil and paper, low tech and no tech learning tools. It was extremely gratifying to see the resources that we had, uh, sent to our students' homes for them to use and to keep. Our adult education, special education and regular education teachers were able to find leveled materials that matched their students' needs. This was a, um, silver lining moment and I'm looking for those whenever I can find them. Among many others where, um, extra materials that we had collected over the years suddenly had homes. It reminded me a little bit of the, uh, island of misfit toys in the cartoon, the Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer. Um, we had materials from past, um, adoptions. We had things that, um, different teachers, when they left or came, um, you know, phased out or moved back in. And all of a sudden we had more materials than most school districts I could, I've talked to, had to be able to send home paper and pencil materials so that kids could have something to get started with while we were implementing, sending these devices home as we did today. We wanted to make sure that kids had things that were on their level and, um, that were easy to get at. And, um, it was really wonderful to know that all these, uh, materials would be able to, to help families. Um, we sent home a tremendous amount of reading books, which had been brought in there at different times and were in closed boxes. And as we discovered them, it was really wonderful to be able to know that families were going to have more books and reading material in their homes. So there was a silver lining moment. Since then, curriculum directors around the state have shared their teachers' learning plans and collections of resources with each other, emphasizing to me the generosity and talent in the school departments of Maine. I in turn have shared these with teachers as they have tirelessly organized materials for our students and families. Debbie Richards, our instructional coach, April Clifford, and I have also worked to prepare professional development materials for all of our faculty and staff to work on at home. Some of these materials are part of our online programs called Target Solutions and some in PD and Focus and other sites. Another thing that I referred, referenced earlier is that, um, we have a public site on, um, the ellsworthschools.org website from Atlas, which is our, um, curriculum management program. And that's a place where, um, families can go and search curriculum about what's being taught in each of the grades or content levels in the high school. And we're now just, um, as of tomorrow, it should be added, I'm, I'm checking it now because they've just built it for me, adding a report feature so that if families are interested in which standards kids are working on, they'll be able to click on a link that goes straight to their child's grade. And they'll be able to see all of the standards that are worked on, um, in each grade, in each content area. So there'll be a link for second grade or fifth grade or eighth grade. And then you'll be able to look at the content area if you're interested in how the work that's being sent home aligns to the standards that students have been working on in past years and this year. And that lines right up with what teachers had planned to teach this year, um, in this time of the year. So hopefully families will get some clarity there. It is not necessary for anyone to go there, but some folks have asked and are interested. And so we've, um, added this feature to our, uh, ellsworthschools.org website so that families can see, how much work is there for them to look at. This is also a place where, um, you can look up a particular class in high school, for example, a geometry class and see the standards that are taught there. There's quite a bit of material there. And if you go to ellsworthschools.org under curriculum, you'll see, um, those links there. The feature where you can look up the standards will be released tomorrow. So I'm very pleased about that. One other little piece is, um, I've talked to you before about using the program CSO. And, uh, that's if you recall some board meetings where we had some students come and talk about literacy links and picturing, posting videos, reading books and that kind of thing. In our curriculum instruction and assessment team, we've been piloting that, looking at ways of using that for digital portfolios in the future, where work would go from grade to grade with a student. And I was really pleased that our ed tech, um, who was on the team, Tara Peterson Brewer, asked if she could bring it to the after school program where she works. And she did that right before we switched to remote learning. And with Beth Mitchell, um, a teacher in the program and also our art teacher in the elementary school, they have gotten CSO up and running with our students at home now with remote learning. And, um, as an administrator on that site, I've had a great time going in every day where kids are, um, reading books to each other. They're posting videos, reading books in their bedrooms and in their living rooms and their backyards. They've been communicating with each other and a lot of the elementary and middle classes are using this program as well. So I, that's a hats off to them for doing something extra in our after school program. You know, our kids, as we all know, they don't, they miss their, their friends in their classrooms, but they also miss their friends in after school and in sports. And then, you know, all the extracurriculars they do, this is one more way that we're helping kids stay connected. So that's been a bright spot for me, another silver lining. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Good evening, everybody. As we closed our schools to in-class instruction nearly a month ago and have emerged into a new, although optimistically, a temporary reality for our community and schools, my report this evening will be brief as, uh, I will provide a more detailed update on the status of our school closure and the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic later in the agenda. However, for my report at this point in time, on behalf of the school board, I would like to express my deepest appreciation to all of the following people and groups. First of all, to all of our Ellsworth School Department, building and department administrators, teachers and support staff members for their work in continuing the essential services, remote learning, food service, maintaining our facilities, keeping our offices operating and being available for questions or help. And I, again, I would remind all parents out there, if you have specific questions about anything going on in the schools or anything going on with the remote learning in your schools for your children or the food service, we've put information out there on who you can contact. Please do not hesitate to contact your teachers or your specific administrators. Would also like to express appreciation for all of our students and families for their patience, patience and understanding in supporting the remote learning program while the program evolves. And in following proper physical and distancing protocols while our staff members provide food for our students, either through pickup or delivery or, um, through pickup of academic materials like happened today with the laptops. We'd also like to express appreciation business, civic organization and private citizens who have stepped forward to support our efforts to provide for our students. We've had countless responses to our requests for donations of shelf stable foods and calls from members of those groups and others who are offering to help in any way possible. We are also permitted to use temporarily the Renney's Department Store Parking Lot as a base for our food pickup program while we await approval of our schools as a permissible site. We're truly fortunate to have so many, uh, members of our community, private citizens, civic organizations and local business owners, who will want to do everything they can to help the kids. I would like to express appreciation to first responders. I would like to express appreciation to first responders. While their efforts are focused on functions and tasks not necessarily directly related to our schools, we must all remember to thank them, and I'm talking our medical people, our ambulance people, our police, our fire, and emergency management for being on the front lines to keep us all safe as possible. While this pandemic has certainly created uncharted waters and territory for all of us, and people are experiencing significant challenges, anxiety, stress, and unknowns, the fact that our community members, first responders, and medical professionals, families, and school staff are working together to support our community and our students is a direct sign that we will emerge in this pandemic and be a stronger and safer community after we get through it. In closing, for this report, I encourage all of us to continue adhering to Governor Mills' Stay Healthy at Home Directive and to abide by all other social and physical distancing guidance issued by the CDC. For the sake of all of us, please stay home safe, healthy, and well.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Okay, item H is committee reports. Finance committee met last night. And that will come up later in the agenda, talking about some of the things that we talked about last night. Board and the Elsworth Support Professionals Association.
You were broken up, Brenda, I didn't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Item J is new business, consideration of ratification for the 2020-2021 collective bargaining agreement between Elsworth School Board and Elsworth Support Professionals Association. We can go into executive session if you think that we need to, or we can just ratify, vote to ratify.
I am willing to make a motion. I move that we ratify the agreement between Elsworth School Board and Elsworth Support Professionals Association under 1 MRS A40568.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jen Alexander.
Did we lose her? Oh, no. We can see you, but can't hear you very well. Okay, I vote yes.
Okay. Abigail Miller.
Yes.
Rob Hudson.
Yes.
Paul Marcosian.
Yes.
And I'm voting yes also, so it's a five-zero vote. Item J two is discussion of school closure. And questions regarding this item may be sent through Zoom question and answer or sent by email to P Marcosian@elsworthschools.org.
All right, I have a few questions that have come in, both through Zoom and through email. Derek Corson says, "Is there no standard within each grade? I have spoken with parents whose kids have different teachers than mine, and the workload is wildly inconsistent, second grade, and where is their principal?"
I can start with the question on where the principal is. I don't know if Mr. Corson was there when the meeting started. Mrs. Lewis went home, and she lives out of town, and when she got home, her home has no power. So unfortunately, she's unable to attend. With regard to your questions this year, with regard to your question of standards, I know that our teachers are working together to try to ensure that there is consistency across the grade levels. My suggestion would be that parents, please contact the specific teacher, Mrs. Lewis at the school. And I don't know if Ms. Gabi Nelly, you have had any conversations with Mrs. Lewis on this? You've done any calls?
Yeah, Mrs. Lewis and I have been talking about this as we started to continue to develop our remote learning plan. I know that we've each been meeting with grade-level teams consistently throughout the weeks of closure, and we are working on those things so that there's consistency amongst grade levels and across grade levels as well. But certainly, if there's an issue, I would encourage people to contact either myself or Mrs. Lewis. And we are available by email, and we can help answer any questions and try to get everything that needs to be taken care of, taken care of.
Okay. I have a question from Breeze Odine. Can you please provide clarification about why it took so long to get the Chromebooks, iPads, et cetera, to the students in the elementary school? These devices, these are, these are devices the students already were using in the classroom. Thank you.
I can provide the initial answer to that. And if IT Director Cliff would like to add to that afterward, you can do so. Basically, for two reasons. One is, for grades K through six in the Elsworth School Department, we have never sent one-to-one devices home with students. We have sent them home to grades seven through 12. When we initially started with the closure, we were unsure as to how long we would be closed. Instruction, so the staff at the grade levels in question, grades K through six, opted to provide work that was designed to prevent regression and maintain skills with the hope that we'd be back in session in schools. When it became clear and evident that we were not going to be coming back until the end of April, we started looking at the potential of mobilizing our devices K through six, working to prepare our teachers, working to prepare our students, and working to prepare the devices to get them home. And this week is the first opportunity we have had to get those home. And Mrs. Clifford, I don't know if you'd like to add to that or not?
Just the other piece is that it gave us, you know, we've had ample opportunity to train teachers so that they are more prepared going in utilizing remote learning tools and having the devices set up and prepped so that they're easily used by students for that purpose. So that's the only thing I have to say, Higgins.
Another question, this is by Beth, doesn't give a last name. Again, I would ask people to use, provide their first and last names. Beth says, "I submitted a letter to the board and the Cory Council a while back about the lack of communication, and now we have our kids' electronics, and I still have no idea what we were supposed to be doing. Is there a system in place to help parents know what they are supposed to be doing?"
Mr. Marcosian, I will address that first, but I would also encourage our principals and IT Director to come in. With regard to sending electronic home for our younger students, we just explained why the time lag was in place. However, with regard to what our kids are supposed to be doing with the remote learning programs, I know that our teachers at those grade levels are sending information home. Teachers and principals are sending more specific information home as to how the remote learning programs are going to continue for the remainder of the year. But again, if you have specific questions about what your child is expected to do, please contact your child's teacher or your child-specific administrator.
I can speak for the middle school in terms of communication. I know that communication is going to parents or students via parents or directly to students in Google Classroom on a weekly basis. I know that teachers are setting up schedules and handing out assignments through Google Classroom and through email. I know fifth and sixth grade parents have been getting emails from teachers weekly with assignments, and now that they have their devices, they're going to also be getting assignments through Google Classroom. But seventh and eighth graders are receiving direct communication from their teachers. And I also know that those teachers are also sending weekly communications with parents as well and in contact with parents also. So if you're not getting communication, please do contact us because I want to know if there's some type of issue that you're being missed for some reason. But I do know that there is regular communication and has been regular communication going home from the middle school.
Paul, I believe you're muted still.
Sorry. I received by email a question from Kristin Schleifer. It says, "I'm sorry if I'm late to the meeting and may have missed discussion. What is being done about internet? My child has been without internet, trying to learn remotely for more than four weeks. She and other children are being left behind. Thank you, Kristin Schleifer."
I think I can address the first part of that, and then I would invite the principals to talk specifically about what they're doing in their schools. We have been working with the Department of Education, hoping to get information from them this week on devices that have been purchased that would allow students and families without internet access, a hotspot that would allow them to get that access. That's an initiative the department's been working on for a number of weeks now. In a meeting with the commissioner last week, we were informed that we would hope to have some information this week. And so I'd also invite the principals of the schools just to weigh in on what they're doing with students who do not yet have access.
As I said earlier, the high school, we're, we're just sending work home. So teachers bring in that work and we mail it to them, mail it to the students. And like I said, we have a working Google Doc of every kid that doesn't have internet. So we've identified those kids, and hopefully, we haven't, I haven't heard word that we've missed any. So mailings are going home to, directly to students.
Middle school is doing something similar. We know that we also have kids who are, who are now kind of living with their grandparents because their parents are still working, so we're sending work to grandparents and, and trying to make sure that everyone that doesn't have access has received work and the same assignments that others are receiving remotely.
And HCTC is doing the same. We have our list of kits, and so we've mailed instructions for work that we're sending home as packets so that kids can work on those things remotely, even if they don't have the internet. And then we've partnered with the high schools, the ascending high school. If we need to leave anything at a ascending high school, we've done that as well.
Okay. We have a couple of questions and comments from Johanna Valenzuela. She asked, "How many attendees have you ended up having?" I think she's referring to this meeting. "I hadn't realized this was going on until I received a personal invitation this afternoon. This has been a wonderful opportunity to see and hear some school news. Specifically, I'd like the opportunity, as a parent, to interact with my child's teacher in a virtual parent-teacher meeting. Has, has leadership considered organizing parent-teacher meetings for this time of distance and virtual learning?" And in addition, this respondent also said, "Way to go, everyone. So much goes into this school system. Bless you all." So I can say, I'd be happy to say thank you for that last comment, and I'll leave the other questions for others to answer.
I, I don't, at this point, I don't know how many teachers have set up meetings with parents, but I do know that they are communicating via email with parents and sometimes setting up individual help sessions on Zoom or Google Meets with students and parents when they are stuck on some work. I've also personally met with parents and students who are struggling and to try to help them come up with a good schedule and help them navigate through this new distance learning that we're all experiencing. So I think some of that is happening, but if there's, certainly if there is a specific teacher or administrator that a parent would like to connect with virtually in this type of forum, please reach out to us, email us, and let us know, and we're happy to set that up.
IT had also published a little video about how to get help if you're having technical issues with your device or iPad. And what I'll do is I'll reshare that video and information. One is an email and one is a phone number that directly creates a help ticket. So any students or parents who are having technical issues with any type of device from their charger doesn't work, or their touchpad's not working, or they can't connect to their teachers, this is, that's the quickest and best way to get help. I'll repost that at the top of the Facebook pages when we're done here.
Thank you.
I've got a couple more questions and comments. May I read some more?
Sure.
This is from Sarah Palmer, and the subject came through email. The subject is, "I'd like to share my pride." She writes, "I hate that this is via email. As a parent, as well as a teacher of 25 years, as well as a citizen and graduate of Elsworth Schools, I want to express that this is not an ideal situation, and as a parent, fully recognize that. As a teacher, I recognize this, but continue to work every day to do the best I can for the kids that I work with. As a parent, to believe that things will be, quote, 'business as usual,' unquote, at this time is unreasonable. Grades are not going to be what they were two months ago. I would have liked to believe that all people can appreciate the efforts that are being made. This has been unbelievably difficult for everyone, and it is even more difficult when coming under attack like this. I and both of my children, regular classes, honors, and GT, in case anyone is wondering, and the Elsworth School Department have taken a few days to find our new stride, but we did it. We are continuing to learn. I am not worried about a single grade that one of them may get as a result of this pandemic. I'd like to say that I am endlessly thankful for the support that teachers and staff have had since we have been out of school. I have learned more things in this time crunch than I ever imagined possible. In conclusion, this entire situation is horrible, and it saddens me. I miss my students, and I know that my kids miss their teachers. I applaud the efforts that have been made thus far and am thankful that I and my children are part of the school department. Respectfully, Sarah Palmer." I have another question. That, that was not really a question, but if anyone wants to respond to it before I go on to the next question. Well, I'll respond by saying, "Thank you very much." Those were wonderfully heartening words to hear, so thank you. I'm going to read a question from Beth, who had a question earlier. It's Beth, she told me, she clarified her last name is Beth Altari. And she says, "And what about those of us who do not have access to a printer? My son is, my son's fifth grade math. I've been having to write them down for him to answer. Also, we've had no instruction on how to use Google Classroom. Will that be coming, will that be coming?"
The answer to that is yes. So the teachers are up and running for fifth grade on Google Classroom right now, and they're just waiting for kids to have the devices in their hands, which was today and tomorrow. And they will be getting instructions on how to utilize Google Classroom, and the math will be able to be accessed online as well.
I have a question from Kirsten Jester. She says, "Hi, Paul. A parent in the chat is asking if K through six students have email access." I haven't seen that question yet, or maybe we already answered it, but anyway, there's that question. Do parents of, do students in grades K through six have email access through the school department?
Paul, I answered that question in the E and that Facebook chat just a few minutes ago. They not all students have email access. They do have access to Google Classroom and Google Drive. They do have access to Google Classroom and Google Drive, and that's how they communicate. There are limits on setting email addresses up for students based on age.
Okay. Question here from Marlena Ford. She says, "It seems like the planning for this remote learning has been haphazard at best in comparison to many other districts. Going into the last Monday of in-person school, it seemed that even teachers did not know what was planned, and it looked like the possibility of closing hadn't even been thought about beforehand. It seems like the Elsora School Department is playing catch-up on things that should have been figured out long before. As a parent and community member and educator, I'm dismayed to see the lack of communication within the board, as well as the lack of communication from the school department to families. Parents do not have information in a timely manner and continue to have spotty communication that is usually variant between grade levels. As a parent, I'm not seeing the same reality as what the administrators are saying is happening." I guess that's more of a comment than a question. So if there's no response forthcoming, I can go on to another question.
Are we not going to talk about communication? I think it was more of a question.
So Beth Altieri again has asked, "I do appreciate all that is being done by the teachers to communicate with our children and working to help our children in any way they can. This is difficult for all of us. I just have been feeling disconnected as to what the expectations for my children."
You know, we're having this question and answer period for a reason. I mean, people have questions. We have a lot of administrators here. I think we can, you know. Obviously, the wait two weeks isn't an answer that a lot of people are comfortable with. And just because they're not comfortable with the amount of communication doesn't mean they're not happy with their teachers or happy with the efforts that have been made, but they're saying that they still have concerns.
My response to that, Mrs. Miller, would be that while the administrative team and leadership group are working with their staff members to get the formal remote learning plan prepared for the board to consider, if families and parents have specific questions and concerns, they need to contact their child's teacher or building administrator. That will not make them wait the two weeks.
And they've heard that from you now a couple times through this meeting, and they're still writing in with these questions because that, to them, doesn't really satisfy them for an answer. Otherwise, they wouldn't be asking it again.
But Abby, that is the correct way to handle the situation. That is the way the chain of command works in this particular situation.
And once again, I disagree. I feel like this is something that the board should have convened on, we should have talked about. We should have talked about how and when we communicate with our parents, when things go out, more about the curriculum. I think that the teachers put in a gigantic amount of effort. But when this many parents have this many questions, they still need to be answered, addressed. We've had opportunity to talk as a board. We've had opportunity to come to... It's not like we've said we're all unavailable. Nobody has said that. And if we want the school to reflect the values of the community, we have to consider their opinion and their needs. I'm not sure if I can be heard or not. It's very low, Jen. I've turned it up as high as I can turn it up. Hang on just a second.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. So to speak on the communication throughout the board, I guess, in my personal opinion, I think the communication, there's been a lot of it. And any questions that I personally had about items going out to parents, which we would all receive ahead of time, I felt like they were answered. I felt like all of my questions were answered. And if I've had any questions as a parent, I have been in communication with, you know, my child's teacher and haven't felt like there has been a huge lack of answering. I understand that on a grand level, things are probably going to seem very confusing. But in my personal opinion and my experiences, I have not seen a lack of communication with the board. I have asked a couple of questions to the whole entire board. I've received my answers, and I felt pretty confident in those. So and then on a parent's side, I can say nothing but amazing things about the communication between two of my... Actually, all of them, all of the specials and the, you know, her classroom teacher and then an assistant teacher. So I understand that it's frustrating, but like Rob was saying, you know, I encourage parents to reach out to that individual, you know, follow that chain of command. And if you're not getting an answer from your child's teacher, then obviously, the next step would be to speak to their building administrator. So on communication, I feel pretty confident right now. I don't feel like this is an easy situation at all. And I commend everybody that's going through it right now because I would imagine there's a lot of sleepless nights. And we all care so much about every single child in our school system. And I don't think that the feeling of, you know, the lack of communication or anything like that isn't something that can't be resolved. And I don't feel like the three or four weeks that we're into this now, four weeks, is something where we need to be panicking on end-of-year assessments or anything like that at this point.
I think the parents are saying that they feel differently.
And I can completely understand that, and that's why I think that this forum and this, you know, this chance to have questions asked and answered, and if they're not answered in the way that somebody is happy, then we can go further, obviously, by email. I think it's a great question that one of the... And I'm sorry, I think it was Johanna had asked about meeting virtually. And I would have to say that I'm sure there would be many teachers that would be happy to do that, you know? And so if there was something that couldn't be communicated by email in this weird time, I'm sure somebody would be willing to Zoom with that parent, you know, just like they would the child in the classes. Again, I do understand that.
I think you're frozen. I think...
I'm sorry, the connection has been unstable tonight.
Well, I do have another question here through email from Gwen Clark. It says, "What can parents do to help if their child was struggling with a subject before this crisis came along in order to keep them caught up? The pass-fail idea that Abby was suggesting is a good one. Why isn't there more discussion concerning this and especially involving parents?"
I will take the first response to that, and I'll let the principals chime in afterwards. In response to Mrs. Clark, grading moving forward for the balance of the year is something we're talking about in depth, as are most other school districts across the state. What we're looking for is the most appropriate way to provide feedback to students and parents on how they're performing, especially given all the circumstances that people are dealing with. We know that people are dealing with stresses and challenges and anxieties for the many things going on in their personal lives, in addition to having their children home all the time. So whether it ends up being a pass-fail or a pass-incomplete, those are all things that we are considering as a group right now. Again, I would stress to families and parents out there, the intent is to make sure that we continue to provide learning opportunities for our students, assess them fairly, and ensure that no student is penalized because of struggles. And again, we can certainly understand that many students, even if they were struggling before we went into the school closure and before COVID came about, the struggles are continuing now with this, and certainly, we do not want to punish students for those circumstances. But I do appreciate that question. And administrators, if you'd like to chime in on that, I would welcome you.
So I can speak from the middle school perspective, that I know that any one of our teachers would be happy to meet with students and parents if a student is struggling academically with a subject or with an assignment, a particular assignment, what have you. I already know that many of our teachers, especially in the seventh and eighth grade, have been having help sessions on a daily basis to help students who seem to be struggling, and they're checking in with kids on a regular basis as well. So I would encourage Ms. Clark to reach out to that specific teacher if her child is having an issue in a particular subject, because I know that they would be happy to meet virtually to go over anything or help with anything that the student needs.
And the same is at the high school. I know that a lot of our teachers are having office hours, they call them, kind of like college, the college model, for an hour, sometimes two hours. And so students can Zoom into them and take a look at a math problem or a question that they have or something like that. So that's something that the teachers added because they felt like they needed more support for the students.
So I have a follow-up comment from Marlena Ford. She says, "Well, since the people will not respond to a comment, here is a direct question. Teachers have been doing a good job, from what I have seen. As an educator in another district, decisions and plans have been made much more quickly there and in other places than what I am seeing here. We had almost daily letters to parents even before the closure. It hasn't been a lack of communication from teachers. It's been a lack from the department itself and administrators. And it's become obvious the board is not feeling informed and not working in a way to make decisions in a timely manner. Every parent should have basic answers and not need to communicate to their teachers to get school-wide questions answered. What is the school department going to do to ensure that everyone feels like they are receiving timely information and their voices are heard? This Q and A is a good start. Thank you."
Mr. Markoz, and I can respond to the portion of this with regard to communication from my office. With regard to communication from my office, my intent is to provide the most updated, detailed information possible that is accurate. Sometimes that does not lend itself to a daily communication that may happen in some of the other smaller districts. But the intent is to get as much information out as possible in a timely fashion that is accurate. And with regard to the communications that I put out, sometimes they're a little bit more lengthy because they do include a lot more information and as much detail as possible. With regard to whether the board feels informed or not, I think I'll let Mrs. Thomas or Mr. Markoz and his board leadership respond to that. And as far as school administrators, I think I would let them respond as well.
I feel that I'm very informed on what's going on and, you know, the financial part, going to workshop and listening to everything that's going on, being able to read communications, even talking to the administrators, I feel that I am informed of what's going on.
Same with me. I don't believe there's a lack of communication at all, regular updates on everything.
And I concur with that. I feel like Mrs. Ford may have misconstrued the feelings of the majority of the board members. I feel very well informed.
I had also already communicated that, but I'll echo that. I personally have not had any feelings that we aren't being communicated with. I am under the understanding that, you know, these communications that go out to the parents and any other board information has been coming to us. And like I said before, I've asked questions, and I've had them answered immediately.
I feel like closing school is something that requires a board vote. In fact, the last communication from the governor wanted the notes from every district's public meeting in which they voted to close school. I've also felt like we needed to convene to talk about curriculum and was denied. I feel like these are important things in which it takes a chorus of voices to reflect the community. And it's not about, well, who's doing a good job, who's not. It's about everybody doing what the democratic process was intended to do.
I can say this. I've never seen anything like this in my 56 years. We're in totally uncharted waters here. There's no book on the shelf that's a standard operating procedure or manual on how to respond to something like this. I think everybody's taking it day by day, not just for the school department, but in business and everything else. So I really... I don't believe that it's been... It's... I don't share your feelings on this, Abby, not at all.
You're entitled to feel that.
I do believe that you've brought up that before too, Abby, about school closure. And with the Elsora School Department, that decision does lie in the hands of the superintendent.
For things like emergencies, for, you know, a school threat or snow day, yes. But our bylaws are very specific about the suspension of use of a school building. And as I said, Governor Mills, I'm reading through this right now, they want the secretary to submit to this office where we voted as a board. Because that expectation is there, that every board is voting.
The statutory authority to close schools rests with the superintendent. What we're required to submit to the Department of Education is the minutes from the board's approval of remote learning plans. Again, that will be coming to the board at the April 28 special meeting, and you will receive a copy of that plan well in advance of that.
So you got this update, sorry, about waivers, resources, essential staff, right? Is that... You've got that?
I'm referring to the guidance that I have received from the Department of Education and the Commissioner's Office.
Because this is something contingent upon keeping funds. Just make sure that it's the right one, that we are making sure that we are voting. They said it's... They said it's.
The purpose for the remote learning plan is to have that approved by the board in the board's minutes that they've approved it, so that the commissioner can waive the annual number of days requirement. That is the purpose of that.
Mrs. Thomas, at this point, I have no additional questions submitted either through email or through the Zoom Q and A.
Thank you, Mr. Markozian.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes?
One of the pieces, and I think it's great that we had the opportunity to go to the question and answer period first, but there are some things that I do want to address in an update on the closure period. Because I think there were some questions that I fully expected we would get this evening that we didn't get.
Why?
I know I gave the board a copy of my document, but I'm gonna
Go ahead.
Just focus on the pieces that are necessary. Much of what was included was included in my April 10 communication, which detailed the reasons for the closure for the balance of the school year. Just a couple of points for members of the public. Please remember, parents and students and community members, it's important that we clarify that while schools are closed for in-school instruction and activities, school for staff and students does not end it for the school year. As we are in essential operation, schools are still required to maintain our operation, including providing remote and distance learning programs and operating food service program for our students. As I stated earlier, we also continue to operate all of our offices and departments and perform all necessary business and operational functions. But again, I want to reiterate, in-school instruction and activities are closed, but the school year and learning for students has not ended. I think we've talked at length about remote learning already. But again, I would just say this, this is another reiteration. I offer the following reminder. The academic school year for staff and students is not over. In order for us to receive a waiver of traditional instructional days from the main Department of Education, we need to provide students with an academic program for the remainder of the school year. And that's what families have been hearing about with the remote learning. The school year calendar officially ends in June. So I would encourage students, and I know in conversations with our administrators, one of the challenges is sometimes we have students not turning in work. And we know that there are reasons for that. So just a couple of things. Students, please remember you are responsible to complete and turn in work that's assigned to you. However, if parents or students have questions or concerns specific to that program or there are circumstances that prevent them from being able to complete the work in a timely manner. For example, one of the issues discussed tonight was many students who are at the high school age are working to support their families. Please contact either your classroom teacher or your building principal. The other piece that I want to clarify is regard to food service. And there have been several communications sent out in letters to families and posted on our websites, also posted on the Facebook page, WDEA 1370 star 977. We're going to continue our meal service pickup program to, available to any students grades K through 12 at no charge to families. Again, families who wish to access this program are asked to call the Ellsworth High School kitchen office at 667-4722, extension 5525. By 8:30 a.m. each day, you're planning to pick up a meal. For the balance of this week, please be reminded that tomorrow's pickup will be for a combined breakfast lunch meal for the following three days, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Friday's pickup will be a combined breakfast lunch meal for the two days of the weekend and all of April vacation week next week. And again, those meals are picked up at Ellsworth High School. We also hope through the very generous donations from so many out there to continue to procure and maintain supplies of shelf-stable foods so we can continue our food delivery program. Again, so many people have stepped up and offered donations of these types of foods that our transportation, I mean, Food Service Department and many of our ed techs and teachers are also helping with. For those wishing to donate food items, please refer to our website and my April 10 letter for details. We've also had many people who have offered monetary donations to support this program in lieu of a food service donation. In some cases, because they're not comfortable going out to one of the grocery stores or they can't find the foods that we're looking for. For anybody who wishes to make a monetary donation, please send a check to the Ellsworth School Department, 66 Main Street, Suite 201, and note EST Food Service in the memo line. The final piece that I'd like to add is end-of-year activities. With the recent announcement to close school, the in-school instruction and activities for the remainder of the school year, we're starting to get a lot of questions from parents about year-end recognition activities for students and staff. I want people to please understand, we are all aware of the importance of our traditional end-of-year activities that recognize student and staff achievements, the importance of those things to students and staff, to families, and members of our community. All of those parties play a significant role in and support the education of our students. And we truly believe in the importance of celebrating these things with the entire community. While we are hopeful and should remain hopeful that conditions will improve to the point where we're once again permitted to hold large group activities and allow traditional events to occur as they have in past years, please understand we cannot predict when large group gatherings will be permitted. And we unfortunately are at the mercy of the COVID-19 virus. But as these events are important to all of us, please know we're exploring creative alternatives, either through a virtual means or looking to postpone dates of some of these activities or some combination of those as an alternative to traditional year-end student recognition and other activities, so that we can provide appropriate and meaningful recognition of student accomplishments, achievements, and milestones in closure for the school year for our students, staff, families, and community. And as we identify and finalize those options, we will certainly provide information to students, families, and the community. I did want to say in closing to this particular piece, and maybe this will be at the end of the meeting, but I'll do it now. I encourage everybody, if we're going to get to the point where we're going to be permitted to have these types of activities, I encourage all of you to abide by the parameters of Governor Mills' stay healthy at home order and continue practicing appropriate physical distancing measures designed to outflatten the curve and prevent the spread of this virus. Each of us bears a responsibility to do our part for ourselves, our families, and our fellow community members. While the pandemic is a situation none of us envisioned and presents unexpected challenges, stresses, anxieties, and unknowns, I encourage you to continue to rely upon family and friends for support, to remain positive and practice kindness, compassion, and caring. Continue to look for the best in people, and there are many examples of this out there. As we do our best to be positive in the face of difficulty and continue to come together and support each other as a community, we will move forward together and we will be that much stronger in the future. Again, please stay home, stay safe, stay healthy, and stay well. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Item J3 is the FY '21 budget update.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. I think this is me. Much has transpired since the last formal budget update that was provided to the board, and that was at your March board meeting. As we know, Governor Mills issued a state of emergency order, ordered the closure of all non-essential businesses, issued a stay healthy at home mandate for all Maine citizens, and supported Maine Department of Ed Commissioner Macon's strong recommendation to close schools to in-class instruction through the end of 1920 school year. As a result of the onset of this pandemic and the resulting actions just listed, significant fiscal challenges have emerged for many parts of our state, regional, and local economy. Many local businesses that are determined to be non-essential were forced to close. Employees of those businesses were laid off. Hotel, motel, Airbnb, and other lodging businesses were closed amongst other things. The closure of these businesses has created significant financial hardship on so many of our citizens and called into question not only what the upcoming tourist season may bring, but what the future may bring. In addition to that, I participated in a conference call with the Department of Ed Commissioner Macon last Thursday to talk about the school closure specifics, but we also discussed the outlook for school budgets. Specifically, we talked about subsidy, not just for the current FY '21 budget cycle, but also for future years. First, for the current budget year, FY '20, which is the current 2019-20 year. As of today, there has not yet been discussion of a curtailment of school subsidy, meaning that we will still be receiving subsidy payments for the balance of this school year. Because our schools are still continuing to operate and provide remote instruction, we're still receiving tuition payments from communities who send their children to Ellsworth schools. Based upon those factors, we anticipate being able to complete the current fiscal school year without a problem. With regard to the FY '21 budget, and this is the proposed budget under development for the 2020-21 school year, I presented an overview at most board meeting of the budget draft, which was based upon budget requests from building principals and department directors, and was presented to the board's finance committee. Included in those proposals were proposals for new staffing to support projected enrollment trends and shifts, requirements for programs, including special education, Section 504, to address emerging trauma and social emotional needs of our students, to add support staff to increase the accuracy of student and staff data, which is tied to funding, and to reduce the excessive paperwork burden on our special education staff. Also proposed expenditures to update our transportation fleet, support our facilities and maintenance plan, and add two new programs at Hancock County Technical Center. At that March meeting, I shared with the board that while the proposed draft expenditure budget represented all needs identified on enrollment, specific needs, and data points, funding of all those items in a single budget cycle would not be possible. And we would be working to prioritize those needs to achieve a budget that adequately and appropriately supports our highest priority needs and is fiscally responsible to our community and citizens. However, as we were working on that process, the unfortunate arrival of the COVID-19 pandemic and its significant financial impact on so many, we're now further prioritizing so as to present a budget to the board and subsequently the council and voters that still meets the adequate and appropriate funding standard of our outstanding academic and co-in extracurricular programs, but also does not place an undue burden on our local citizenry. Along with that, for 2020-21, it's important to know that we have received a preliminary subsidy report printout. The final version has not yet been distributed. My understanding at this time, based upon the conversation with the commissioner, is that the funding levels represented in that document will be the final budget numbers for the 2020-21 budget cycle. But I would remind all of you on the board to remember, until we receive that final document, I think everything is still on the table. With regard to FY '22 and beyond, these are the two years that follow budget that the current cycle is addressing. Given the significant and evolving fiscal impact resulting from the pandemic, including the hardships being faced by our citizens and local businesses, the state and federal programs aim to supporting citizens and businesses throughout the shutdown period, we need to be cognizant that we will likely face significant budgetary challenges over the FY '22 and FY '23 budget cycles as well. That is also being considered as we work on finalizing the budget for next year. So as Mrs. Thomas mentioned a little bit earlier, the board's finance committee met with me last evening and recommended, based upon the combination of factors that I've just described, that we move forward towards a final budget proposal that does not increase the level of local appropriation for the next school year. In order to reach a final budget at this level, we will need to make significant difficult decisions based on established and identified priorities. While it will require making difficult decisions, reductions in budget requests, it may also require making additional reductions. However, even with all the difficulty that we will see with that, it is an appropriate decision for all. This is not just a school system issue. This is not just a community, this is a significant public health issue that is causing significant financial hardship on so many, and the school department needs to do its part. So again, I would say the finance committee is recommending that, and I agree with this recommendation, that we come to a final budget that does not increase the local appropriation over what was locally appropriated this year. The other piece that I would provide for board members and for the community, at this time, the budget approval process will be as follows. Work on identifying recommended reductions in the budget is taking place now and will be for the balance of this week. I'll ask to convene the finance committee during the week of April 20th and 24th for review and approval of that budget. And we'll provide that information electronically to members of the board. On the special board meeting on April 28th, the board will consider and approve that budget for submission to the Ellsworth City Council. I believe the council is scheduled to meet on Monday, May 18th, at which time the presentation of our proposed budget will be presented to them. And the budget validation referendum will not take place until July 14th, 2020. Typically, it's the second Tuesday in June, but because of all the issues going on with the pandemic, the recommendation has been made to move that election date to July 14th. So that referendum will take place that day if restrictions on large group gatherings have been removed. So with that, I would certainly entertain any questions from members of the board.
Could you explain what happens? Our fiscal year is done July 1st. So what is the state telling us about this July 14th referendum?
What happens with that is by law, we are supposed to have an approved budget by the end of the current fiscal year, which is June 30th. However, when budget validation referendums were implemented 10 to 12 years ago, there were provisions put in law that said, in the event that a budget is voted down at referendum, you'll have to hold another legislative body approval of your budget and then another budget validation referendum. That presented the possibility of that process extending past the end of the fiscal year. What is currently in law is if you do not approve a budget until after July 1st, the budget that you start the year with is at the level of the current year fiscal budget. So based upon the timeline that I just provided, if the budget is approved at the referendum on July 14th, up until July 14th, we will be using a budget that is at the level of the current FY '20 budget.
Thank you. So obviously, needing more information as a board. I can't believe I'm going to say this, but I look forward to that meeting. So.
And again, what I would add is, one of the things that we're talking about, and you know, you've all seen the proposal of the initial budget. There are a lot of new things that are in that proposal for the budget. For the most part, what you're looking at is there will be no new positions, no new initiatives. And it will likely go beyond that because when we talked about a budget that included all requests from all departments, we were looking at a 9% increase. In order for us to get to a budget that has a 0% increase in local appropriation, we're going to have to make significant cuts.
Is that meeting, obviously, just for the record, it's going to be a Zoom meeting like this, right?
Yes, from my understanding, until such time as the Governor State Help At Home mandate and social distancing recommendations are lifted, we will continue to meet in this format.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay, next up is calendars announcements. There's a special board meeting on Tuesday, April 28, 2020.
Yes, and Mrs. Thomas, may I just add, at that meeting, in addition to considering the budget, you'll have remote learning plans and will likely have an executive session. And we're hopeful that we will have the technology that will allow us to successfully do an executive session for that particular budget item, excuse me, agenda item, not budget item, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Markozian, do we have any more comments or questions?
We've got one more.
Sure.
This is from Jasmine Ireland, a teacher at Ellsworth High School. And it's actually, she's sent along a question on behalf of students. She's seen some, well, I'll read what she wrote. Some students are posting questions on the Facebook stream for this meeting. They are wondering if they could be included in emails that go out to parents citing that their parents don't always read communications and would like to be informed of recommendations and decisions.
Well, I'm not the technology person, but I would suggest that if there was a way that we can do that, would certainly be happy to. I know that in our system, those communications typically go out to all the parents that provide us with the information. And I would have to defer that question to our IT director. We could certainly talk about whether that is a possibility. But the other thing that I would also add is, in addition to those communications being sent directly to parents, they are also posted on the school's Facebook page, the school's website. Star 977 gets a copy of those, as does WDEA 1370, and they post them on their websites. So we will work on being able to send them directly, but those communications are out there for public consumption.
I don't mind taking a look and see if we can do that on FNA Campus. And I can send an update to the students at Ellsworth High School that we have year graduation email groups, and I can do that. Thank you, April.
Can I, I'd like to comment and say that I'm glad Can I, I'd like to comment and say that I'm glad to hear that students are watching this meeting and following along. That's good news.
Excellent.
Item M is a German, entertain a motion.
Second. Or I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're going to vote, Ms. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Paul Markozian?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. And the time of adjournment is 8:26.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, everybody.
You have a good night. Be safe.
Thank you.
Does anybody need masks before you sign off? Does everybody have face masks for stopping stuff?
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set, but thank you.
For doing a good job flattening the curve.